Okay, I'm gonna call the word of this meeting of the 21st of October 2021, City of Nashville Planning Board. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson.
Here.
Adam Barley.
Here.
Maggie Harper, here. Alderman David Tenza. Alderwoman Jan Schmidt. Dan Hudson.
Here.
Mark Meehan.
Here.
Bob Ballinger.
Here.
And Larry Hirsch.
Yeah, I think you missed my name, too.
Oh, yeah.
I'm here.
Wow. You're not on the list, actually.
Uh-oh. Yeah. So next up on the agenda, we have approval of the minutes from October 7th, 2021. Everybody should have a copy in their packet. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at the minutes and wanna make a motion as to whether they're ready for us to accept as written or need any amendments?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 7th, 2021 Planning Board meeting.
Alright, so we have that motion to approve the October 7th minutes by Mr. Ballinger. We have a second. Second by Mr. Meehan. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Abstentions? Myself.
And also myself.
Yeah, I wasn't there, so. So two abstentions, one, two, three, four, five. Yeses. So that motion passes. Communications?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Board. The following communications were received after your packet went out. You should've received an email of these as well. October 7th, 2021, draft minutes. October 4th, 2021, case A210191. Joe Mandola comments for Fifth Street and the updated plan. October 4th, 2021, case A210215. Joe Mandola comments, 496 and 500 Main Dunstall Road and the updated plan. In addition, October 14th, 2021, from Steve Auger, responses to fire, 496 500 Main Dunstall. Sidewalk waiver is also included, A210215. Engineering responses. Updated stormwater report. And that's it on that case. A21, 1019, 2021. A210219, I'm sorry, 1019, 2021. That's the updated waivers for 25 East Otterston Street. Need to remove waiver three for drainage. 1019, 2021, updated plan for 25 East Otterston Street. And then October 20th, 2021, Nashua Fire comments, final fire comments for 496 and 500 Main Dunstall. October 21st, 2021, that would be today, turn cycle 25 East Otterston Street, request to postpone until the November 4th, 2021 Planning Board meeting. And that would conclude the communications.
Okay, thanks. Any reports of committees or liaison? If anybody went to anything yet?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay, so nothing there. Alright, so I'm gonna go ahead and move into the the reading of the procedure. So, the procedure of the meeting and hearings will be as follows. After each legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan, or subdivision plan is read by myself, the board will determine if the application is complete and ready for the board to take jurisdiction. At first, the public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or their representative will be given the time to present an overview and description of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations, and the board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. I'll then ask for testimony from the audience. First, I'll ask for anybody wishing to speak in opposition or concern to a plan. If they, you do, would like to do that, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. This will be your time to express your concerns or ask questions of the plan. Next, I'll ask for testimony from anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The board may then ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. The applicant will be given a rebuttal period, at which time they can speak to any of the concerns raised by the public testimony. After this is completed, the public hearing will end, and the board will resume a public meeting, at which time we will deliberate and vote on the application before us. I'd ask that both sides keep their remarks to the subject in hand and not to repeat what has already been said. We wanna be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on testimony presented and considering all applicable approval criteria established in our Nashville Revised Ordinances for Conditional Special Use Permits, Site Plans, and Subdivision Plans. I thank everybody for their interest and attention. I ask if you do have a cellphone, you just make sure it's on silent or vibrate at this time. Okay. So, going down the agenda, old business conditional special use permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plan, case A21-0177. That's been tabled to our December 2nd meeting at this time. I don't think there's any action required of that at this point.
I think you did it last time.
Okay. Old business site plans, there are none. New business conditional special use permits, there are none. New business subdivision plan, first up, case A21-0191. This is Tim Florence, owner, application and acceptance of a proposed lot line relocation and subdivision plan. His property is located at 3rd and 9th Fifth Street. And this is, was postponed from October 7th, 2021 meeting. Did we just not get to that one? I wasn't here. Is it on the table?
No, this was, yeah, it was tabled, it was, yeah, it got requested.
Okay, so, so there's no untabling request?
There's no untabling, it was just, yeah.
Alright, so, first up, then we'll need to decide on jurisdiction for the application. So, has anybody on the board had a chance to review this application and wanna make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Peterson?
A vote that we take jurisdiction of project A210191 subdivision plan.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Peterson to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barley. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, can we get a vote on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Any abstentions? None. So that's, what, seven?
Seven, zero.
Seven, zero, that motion passes, so we have jurisdiction of A21-0191. So, do we have somebody representing the applicant that wants to present? Is it on Zoom?
It will be on Zoom.
Okay. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Paul Delaney, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Terrific. Oh, I'm gonna share my screen. But this is not it.
Still there? Are we frozen up, or?
Are you still there, Paul?
Hi, I'm still here. I'm trying to share the screen.
Okay.
Oh, there we go, let's see.
Alright, we can, we can see your screen now.
Okay, great.
Yeah, if you can make the map full screen, that would be good.
I don't know, is that, are you looking at the plan now?
It's not full screen, we're looking at
Okay.
Full of the background and the front map. If you can maximize the plan set, that would be good.
Sorry about the learning curve here.
Do you have that plan set?
I have it, I can actually share it if you want. If you want to stop sharing, I can share it.
Oh, that'd be terrific, that'd be great.
You wanna stop sharing, and then we'll have planning share it.
That's gonna be easy to do, since I wasn't very successful.
Okay. You have to just stop sharing.
Okay, I'll just get back to you.
Yeah, you have to stop sharing.
Yeah, Paul, if you can just click out.
Yeah, there's just a button that says, "Stop sharing."
Okay, yeah, I just, I lost the screen, the main screen, let's see.
There you go, I'm kicking them out.
There we go. So, stop sharing, yeah?
Yep, we're gonna have planning bring up the plan sets.
There you go.
Okay, so you can just ask them to flip through as necessary here.
What page?
Okay, we're on the title sheet now. Yes, this applicant is seeking to subdivide his land on Fifth Street. He actually owns both the map 87309 and 87310. And the plan to create more sizable lots is to relocate the lot line on the southerly side of 309 and move that closer to house number nine. And if you could go to the next sheet. So there's the existing vacant lot on Fifth Street, corner of Ledge. So the proposal is to remove, to remove the existing garage. There is an existing garage attached to this, the single-family home that's going to remain. And move, remove, now if you go to the next sheet, the lot line go from where it is today to that position eight feet from the existing dwelling. And subdividing the remainder into two equal 8,600 square foot lots. And each lot is proposing a duplex apartment housing. The project had gone before the ZBA and was approved for density and lot sizing. And that was May 11th, 2021. So they approved the development basically as we show here. We went a little further for the zoning and included the next couple of sheets. But really, the applicant tonight is just seeking subdivision approval for the, for the three-lot subdivision. The one existing home and the two new buildable lots. You could scroll through the rest of the plan set. And that's just the stuff we turned in, opportune to the application itself. Showing the two duplexes on 87309 and new lot 87319. And the driveways, the new driveways that will show up there. And the sidewalk configuration and the removal of granite curb cuts for the new driveways. We maintain the 50 feet for the first driveway on 87309, away from the intersection. And if we were to scroll back to the existing conditions, sheet two. You'd see there's a fire hydrant right there on the corner of Ledge and Fifth, to serve any fire needs. And that's basically the project in a nutshell.
Okay, can you talk about the waivers? There is four waivers in the application.
Sure, we submitted a site plan set. And when we initially spoke with Scott regarding that, that application, it was decided that we didn't need a site plan approval, it was strictly subdivision approval. So we just added the waivers to that to relieve the, those particular waivers, landscape plan, lighting, and the driveway plan, et cetera.
Okay, so just to be clear, we have four waivers in front of us. One of them is for 190-281D10, which is the physical feature waiver for plan sets. Not showing all physical features within 1,000 feet. That's accurate, that you're applying for that?
That is correct, yeah. We did a basic existing conditions of the surrounding neighborhood, as you can see. And since it's a subdivision application, we didn't feel that 1,000 feet was necessary.
Okay, and then the second one we have on ours is a request for waiver of 190-279, which is a traffic letter report?
That's correct, yeah, we didn't feel that this rose to the level of a traffic study.
Okay, and then the third one we have is 190-281D53, which is the landscape plan?
Correct, for the same reason that this is not a site plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and then just for record, the fourth one you're requesting is a waiver of 190-275, which is a lighting plan?
Correct, for the same reason.
Okay. And then, we have comments in front of us from Joe Mandola dated October 4th, I think? Linda, is that accurate?
That's correct.
So those are the ones that you have received and are accepting as, as part of staff stipulation number six?
I didn't see the staff report, so. We, there was, there was one, there was a couple of issues we had with the comments. I'm gonna pull them up now, so I can have them currently.
Yeah, okay. I think those are, those are my only questions. Does that conclude your presentation?
It does, yeah. The variance approval on, on May, in May 11th, 21. And, yeah, that's the whole package, yeah.
Alright, so at this time, then I'll ask the board, anybody on the board have any questions for the applicant on this application?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Meehan? Yep.
I was just curious about the use of asphalt sidewalk when there's concrete sidewalks across the street and joining both the asphalt sections? Is that something that we look at, or is that?
That might be, I don't know, Dan, you wanna comment on that, or staff?
Yeah, the, there's a variety of sidewalk throughout the city, so, I mean, where we have areas of primarily concrete, we try to match type. Or where we're placing sidewalk, we try to do it in kind. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there's existing asphalt sidewalk?
According to the plan, there's concrete across the street and on both ends, and there's asphalt being proposed in the middle.
Yeah.
That's actually existing, sorry.
On the development side of that street, it's currently, it's currently granite curb and existing asphalt sidewalk.
Okay. Paul, could you comment? Is it, is it already asphalt on the?
It is asphalt, yeah. I believe you're still looking at the existing conditions, that's asphalt.
Oh, okay, yeah, I can see that.
The asphalt wraps around Ledge Street up to the hydrant. And goes all the way to be on the property line there.
Yeah. Right, so you're, you're not proposing any changes to the sidewalks?
No, all we need to do for this project is extend the sidewalk from the end there where the, where the cursor is, just to that first driveway there.
Right, yeah, okay.
There is no sidewalk on that side, correct?
There's, there's just, no, there is concrete sidewalk, if you look down further a little bit. To the right there, you'll see the concrete sidewalk.
In front of the new?
There, and the cursor's on it now. That, that's an existing home there, with existing concrete sidewalk.
So it's, there's a mix there, it looks like, right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions? Anybody else? Mr. Ballinger?
Mr. Chair, I guess just a general question, I, I think the applicant's representative indicated that he hadn't fully reviewed the October 4th engineering comments. I, I guess I'm, I'm just, I have a little bit of pause about putting that as a condition of approval if, if the applicant hasn't really reviewed them. I don't think there's anything really outstanding there, but I, I don't know if the applicant is prepared to commit to responding to those comments or complying with those comments if he hasn't fully vetted them or reviewed them.
Paul, do you wanna comment on that?
The only, the only issue we had specifically was that relocation of the catch basin. If you see CB3 there on the screen. Joe asked if we couldn't move that to a, a position that was going to have curbing. So if you, if you scroll this set down to the next plan. I'm sorry, the next one after this. And it looks like it's gonna have to be the next one. Let's see if I can scroll through this. I don't see the catch basin there. It's hard to tell, because I can't see the sheet number. Let's see. The layout, probably sheet, let's see, sheet three?
I think it's sheet six.
Yeah, right here, you see the CB3?
Yep.
Today, as it exists, it's, it doesn't have a curb behind it, it's just sitting on the pavement, and there's a grass strip behind it. But when we put the driveway in, it's gonna remain the same, but Joe wanted that CB moved to a different location to, to catch the curb reveal. As, as it stands now, it would be just on the edge of the driveway. And I just didn't know if, you know, that would've been fair to put on the, the applicant to the cost of, you know, moving that drainage pipe and structure. Where it, it basically is gonna remain the same after we construct the site. There was no curb, there's no curb there now, and there wouldn't be any when, when we, if we leave it.
But you'd have essentially a catch basin in the middle of the driveway?
I mean, if it, if it's not mandatory to move it, then that's, that's what we would choose to do, but if, if, if it becomes an issue, then you would, you would do it. But I just don't know if he's willing to, or wants to incur that cost to move that.
Mr. Hudson, go ahead.
So the, the stipulation in the staff report just simply states to address comments to the engineering department's satisfaction.
Right.
So we're happy to further discuss that with the applicant. We understand the additional expense, we can talk about it.
Okay.
The situation that we have often is that this property may be sold to somebody else, and then that owner at some point in time is gonna object to having a catch basin in their driveway, in which case they're gonna ask Public Works, can you move that? And that, that's the type of situation that we run into. But, you know, I'm sure we can, and obviously, a catch basin on a curb line is much more efficient at capture than one in the driveway with no, no, no real well-defined gutter line. So we can talk about that, I mean, perhaps there's a notation on the plan or something to the effect that any future owner would understand that that's a condition that they accepted when they bought the property, and we're not gonna be asked or, or, you know, later to move it.
Okay.
So, but we're happy to further discuss that with the applicant.
That sounds reasonable, appreciate that.
Okay. Other questions of the applicant by the board? Mr. Ballinger?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I, I guess, and again, I don't know if there's necessarily anything that's insurmountable here, but there are, there are 28 comments. And I guess there's some general ones about drainage, perhaps beyond, which we, we've talked about. But there's also discussion about an ADA compliant ramp at, at Fifth Street's intersection with Ledge Street. I guess I'm just trying to gauge, or understand, or come to some level of comfort that that the applicant is fully aware of what conditions have actually been stipulated here. Again, because this is gonna be written into the approval if the project is approved. And I guess what I'm trying to avoid is a situation where we, we, we commit to this tonight, and then you finally get to, to fully understand the breadth and the depth of the comments, and, and we, we create confusion after the fact. I'm just trying to understand if the applicant's representative has fully read through all comments, and if we put as a stipulation of approval tonight, compliance with, with October 4th, 2021 engineering comments, that that will not be an issue going down the road.
We actually did address those comments. I have the, the reply form in front of me, I wish you could see it. But yes, we did, we addressed all of the items. If you'd like me to go through, because they're pretty easy, I mean, we added the notes, we fixed the scale, we, we added the contour for the little stuff. There was no overlap in the sidewalk.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we need to go through the, we just wanna make sure you got them and you saw them.
Yeah, we saw them and we replied to them, and the biggest one was just that catch basin. Everything else was more drafting stuff, so, we're not worried about that. The ADA ramp, there is an existing ramp on Ledge Street. Whether it's exactly ADA, officially ADA, I'm not sure, but it, it Whether it's exactly ADA, officially ADA, I'm not sure, but it, it does exist there, where you can get, uh, you know, it is, there is a ramp to the, you can get a wheelchair on there, so.
Think, think.
That exists, I'm not sure if Mr. Mandola knew that when he, when he viewed the plan, that there is an existing flush entrance onto that asphalt sidewalk.
Got it, Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, there is an existing ramp, it's, it doesn't have detective warning, so it's not currently ADA compliant in that, in that standpoint. And as it is on the corner of the property being redeveloped, we would like that to be addressed, so that, you know, we don't have to come in later and try to do it and ask for an easement and that sort of thing, because we'd be right up against the property. So that's, that's why it was included in the request, and we would like to see that done.
Okay.
Again, we can talk about specifics of that at a later date.
Yeah, I understood.
Got it.
Mr. Chair, I, I appreciate, I appreciate, thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate Mr. Delaney's clarification, if, if I misinterpreted that earlier, I, my apologies, I, I wasn't sure that he had actually seen and responded to the comments, so I do appreciate the clarification from Mr. Delaney, as well as Mr. Hudson, so thank you.
Got it.
You're welcome.
Uh, any other questions of the applicant by the board? Okay. Uh, anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned, have a question of the plan? Is there anybody online, or do you know? Nobody's?
There's one phone number I don't recognize, but.
Okay. I'm not hearing anything, okay. Uh, anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Okay, hearing none, I will give the board one last opportunity to ask any questions of the applicant or staff while we're in the hearing. Okay, uh, it sounds like there are none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing. Okay, so, moving on to the meeting, so we have essentially a multi-lot subdivision here with a, a couple of proposed new house sites. You know, we have the four waivers to address, they're reasonably typical waivers for a subdivision of this magnitude. The, so I don't know if there's anything there, it sounds like we've addressed the engineering comments letter. I don't think there, is the, is the date of the fire department letter, the 16th, the right date, Scott?
16th?
Yep, that's still correct.
That's still correct, yeah.
Yep, okay. So, anybody have any comments, or wanna say anything in the meeting here? Doesn't sound like it, so, hearing none, I would entertain a motion on this application. I'm gonna remind everybody that is an October 4th date on stipulation number six. Anybody wanna make a motion? Mr. Ballinger?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve new business, project 821-0191 subdivision plan, property located at 3-3 through 9, Fifth Street, Nashua. Finding that it does meet the requirements of NRO 190-138G, subject to 12 conditions as follows. First condition, with respect to a waiver of 190-281D10 regarding physical features on the site, shall read "is granted" and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number two, regarding a waiver of NRO 190-279 with respect to traffic letter or report, shall read "is granted" and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation, stipulation number three, request for waiver of NRO 190-281D53 regarding landscaping plan, shall read "is granted" and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number four, regarding a waiver of NRO 190-275 regarding lighting plan, shall read "is granted" and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number five, as written in the staff report. Stipulation number six shall be amended to read the date of October 4th, 2021. Stipulations seven through 12, as written in the staff report.
Actually, excuse me. I noticed that I was in error on stipulation seven, that should be the fire department, not Division of Public Works at the end of that stipulation.
Oh, sorry, did you wanna amend that? Yeah. Number seven, the last.
To the satisfaction of the fire department, do I, did I have the?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, yes, I will amend that motion. Stipulation number seven shall read, prior to the chair signing the plan, "All comments in an email from Mark Repalia, Fire Marshal's Office, dated August 16th, 2021, shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the fire department."
Got it. Okay, thanks. So we have that motion to approve with the 12 stipulations as stated by Mr. Ballinger. Uh, do we have a second? Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion by the board?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Hudson.
I just wanted to know for the, just for the information of the board, the resubmit was received on 10/19, so a couple days ago, so that's why the board, you know, hadn't received that information. As, as has been explained in the past, you know, engineering's often later than the deadline, you know, specified for submitting comments, but when we do submit, this is what happens, we get a resubmit a couple days before a meeting, and we don't have time to address those, or we update our comments and things like that, so, so it's, it's one of those things, it's never a perfect timing for issuing comments, but that's what happened in this case, and that's why the board didn't have that information.
Okay, thanks. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so that motion passes, 7-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much, I appreciate it. Good night.
Okay, next up on our agenda, we have new business subdivision plans, this is case number 821-0215, Jeffrey and Chris, the Lynch owners, lot line relocation and three-lot subdivision. Property is located at 496 and 500 Main Dunstable Road. And, and this one was not taken into jurisdiction?
Correct, yeah.
So, first up, I'll ask the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this application, wanna make a motion as to its readiness for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Barley?
I'd make a motion that, um, excuse me, case number 821-0215 is complete and ready for the board to accept jurisdiction.
Okay, so you have that motion to take jurisdiction of 821-0215, do we have a second on that?
Second, Mr. Chair?
Second by Mr. Ballinger, any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Uh, that motion passes, 7-0, we have jurisdiction. Okay, Steve, are you here to present?
I am. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Steve Auger, I'm a project manager with Hayner Swanson, and our office is located at 3 Congress Street here in Nashua. Joining me in the audience tonight is the owner and applicant, Mr. Jeffrey Lynch, and attorney Gerald Prunier of Prunier &amp; Proleman, providing legal counsel for Mr. Lynch. The purpose of our plan tonight is twofold, it's to first relocate the lot line between lots 837 and 1999, and then we'll be subdividing lot 1999 into three single-family lots, new lot 1999, lot 2993, and lot 2994. Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do now is run through my presentation and kind of brief you all as to, to what our plan does.
Sure.
Uh, if you'll, I call your attention to the plans I've put up on the board, and, and I know Linda's kind enough to, to share it on the screen for those folks watching. This does involve two parcels, 496 Main Dunstable Road and 500 Main Dunstable Road. 496 is the home of the applicant, Jeff Lynch. 500 Main Dunstable, which if you look at my plan on the left board, that's the, the house lot in the lower right of the plan, that is the home of Mr. Lynch's brother, Chris Lynch. They are lots 837 and 1999 on map C, lot 837 is 500 Main Dunstable Road, the smaller lot, and lot 1999 is 496 Main Dunstable, the larger tract. Lot 1999 currently measures 3.889 acres in size, and lot 837 measures 1.377 acres in size. Both tracts are zoned R30. The lots are bordered by City of Nashua Conservation Land to the north and the east, single-family homes to the south, and Main Dunstable Road to the west. Uh, lot, 496 Main Dunstable, lot 1999 currently includes Mr. Lynch's home and 3,600 square-foot barn in the back of the property. 500 Main Dunstable, lot 837 is currently Mr. Christopher Lynch's home. Both properties have access to municipal sewer, water by Penechuk, gas, and electric cable, and telephone. As background, lot 1999 has received numerous variances over the year. In the year 2000 and 2009, we received approval from the zoning board for use, for use of a landscape business and storage barn for the facility in, in the back of the site, the existing 3,600 square-foot barn. We got a variance for height of the building and for some outdoor storage. Recently, on August 24th of this year, we went back before the zoning board, as part of this process is, we are proposing a 6,000 square-foot addition to the existing barn, so we received a variance to allow an accessory use to exceed 40% of the principal area use. Uh, this is the two existing, so, so when we, we wind up with four lots, is if you look in the, the plan on the left, the one I've colored, that shaded in red area, that is currently part of 500 Main Dunstable Road, that will wind up going into the larger, new lot 1999, the, the lot in the back there. And then along, along the front, we'll have three new residential lots. The lot on the far left that has frontage, kind of like an L shape there, that's the frontage and the access for new lot 90, or, I'm sorry, new lot 2994, that'll be the, the lot that is mostly out back. The existing home at 496 Main Dunstable, that will remain new lot 1999, and then that lot in the middle there, the smaller one, that'll be new lot 2993. Mr. Lynch's vision of his property, as I mentioned, also includes the addition of a 6,000 square-foot barn. You can see, if you look at the plan on the right, you can see where that's situated on the very back lot, it extends off the existing 3,600 square-foot barn. That barn additional will strictly be used for storage, for some items Mr. Lynch has, specifically a motorhome, some antique tractors, various other personal items. The barn will be, the, the expansion of the new barn will be 350 feet from Main Dunstable Road, and there, there is a high point in the land out front, so you really won't be able to see the barn structure from Main Dunstable, just the, the land itself serves as, as a visual buffer. With regards to stormwater, we have a series of leaching catch basins throughout the new developed property. Most of them are, are out back, where we're proposing a new house and the, the barn expansion. We also have an underground leaching trench as part of that. And then on the proposed house lot in the middle, lot 2993, that fronts on Main Dunstable, we have a couple leaching catch basins at, on either side of the driveway access to Main Dunstable, to, to deal with that runoff there. Uh, we, we did receive, um, engineering comments, as Mr. Hudson is aware, we resubmitted those and addressed Mr. Mandola's comments this week. We believe we fully comply with the stormwater regulations of Nashua, so we're, we're fine with that being a stipulation of approval. We also, in our resubmit, addressed a couple of comments that the fire marshal had, and within the past couple of days, we received response from Mark Repalia that they are all set with our, the way we address their comments. Uh, we are asking for two waivers with this, Mr. Chairman. The first one being section 190-282B9, and that calls for the existing conditions and topography within 1,000 feet of the site. Is this, I'll summarize that rather quickly, is this, this is a rather common waiver request. In order to comply with that, we would have to boundary and topographically survey 72 acres within this site, and this, just in, in no way is that, you know, feasible financially or from a workload standpoint to do that. So we are asking for that waiver. The second one, we are asking for a waiver of construction of sidewalks and to, to make a contribution instead. That is section 190-212 of the National Land Use Code. There are a couple of requirements to, to make that contribution. We believe we meet those. In the way we are off calculating the, the contribution, this is something that, that was discussed with, with Mr. McPhee, there's, there's currently no sidewalks along our Main Dunstable frontage, there are some across the road, you can see there, this kind of unique right-of-way situation that, that splits off as a Y there across from us, that's actually Gilson Road right-of-way. So there's a, a section of sidewalk that runs parallel across from us, underneath the words "Main Dunstable" on the plan there, and beyond where that, that Y of Gilson right-of-way runs. So the section across Main Dunstable where, where there's no sidewalk, that comes out to 243 linear feet, subtracting out 18 feet as allowed for a driveway, which the Land Use Code lets us do, that leaves us with 225 square feet, and multiplying that by $50 per linear foot, that comes out to a contribution of $11,250. We are requesting that we would like to subtract $1,620 from that amount, and that is a sidewalk contribution that Mr. Lynch paid back in 2000, when his site first appeared before the planning board. So that brings us to a grand total of $9,630 for a contribution that Mr. Lynch is willing to make. Uh, as I mentioned, we, we have resubmitted to the engineering department and, and are awaiting their review. We've reviewed the stipulations of approval, we're, we're fine with all of those. We believe the plan is in compliance with the National Land Use Code, and we respectfully seek your approval. At this time, I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, thanks. Anybody from the board have any questions with the plan? Mr. Barley?
I have a question, just in terms of the, the expansion of the existing garage, I just want to confirm, that's purely for personal use, there's no intent that it would be used for business purposes?
Yes, that is, that is strictly personal use.
Thank you.
Are there questions by the board for the applicant? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, this, this may actually be better answered by, by staff, but just in regard to the previous $1,600, $620 which has already contributed, is there a statutory limit for when those funds have to be expended, or does that sort of stay in the kitty in perpetuity, or, I, I don't have any issues with the credit per se, I just didn't know how long, I believe Mr. Auger indicated it was a number of years ago that, that, that prior contribution was made, I, I just didn't know at what point the city either constructs or doesn't construct, or pulls the funds in escrow.
Yeah, I, we collect the money, and Public Works usually allocates it, so I don't know if Dan would know that or not.
I'm not aware of a expiration date, so we do have, we do have funds, and, and it's broken into various quadrants of the city, there's four separate sidewalk funds. There's four separate sidewalk funds, northeast, northwest, so on and so forth. But no, I'm not aware of a certain timeline.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Just a pre-follow-up, and it's more of a comment than a question. We obviously heard testimony at the last meeting regarding the middle school and perhaps some sidewalk upgrades that may be required along Buck Meadow Road. This perhaps... I don't want to presuppose the outcome, but it looks like you may have some funds with which to maybe initiate a capital improvement project to help bring the sidewalks along Buck Meadow up to at least closer to standard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Other questions by the board? Okay. Hearing none. At this point, I will open the application to the public. Is anybody in the public? There's nobody obviously here in the room. But is there anybody online that wishes to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan? Okay, hearing none. I'll ask, is anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Hearing none. I will give the board one more chance to ask any questions of the applicant or staff in the hearing. Ms. Harper?
Could you just go through what the current access to the property is and what the new access to the lots is going to... I think I understand it, but if you could just go over it for me, that would be great.
Certainly. Is Mr. Chairman, is it okay if I approach the board? It'll be easier to do this from the plan.
Yeah, just grab the microphone. Just if you can talk it through, because there's people online, that's all. I don't know if Linda can... Just at least put the plan on that he's pointing to.
Okay, so currently right now, here is the driveway access. And it runs right here to... This is Mr. Lynch's existing house. So there's like a U driveway here. And then this driveway runs all the way back to the existing barn right here. So what we're proposing on the plan here is... So this driveway, we're actually reconstructing the driveway, just making some improvements that the fire department requested. This will remain in place and service. The new house and the barn area back here, we'll be ripping out this pavement and these connections right here. And we're constructing a new driveway access for this house right here, which will go across this lot's frontage. But we are proposing easement for it. So that will access directly to Main Dunstable. This new house right here will have a driveway that accesses Main Dunstable. And the existing house here has its own driveway that accesses Main Dunstable. So of the four lots, everyone's going to have their own separate access points. You're welcome.
Question also?
Mr. Peterson?
Go ahead.
Go on to Lot 2994, the top one for the new house. What will be the postal address for that location?
Sure, this one right here, this will be... Actually, we've got it on this plan here. So this one will be 494 Main Dunstable. The existing 496 Main Dunstable will keep its address. The existing 500 Main Dunstable will keep its address. And the lot in between here will be 498 Main Dunstable.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions by the board? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It may have gone beyond the scope of the effort required for this project. Is there any insight that Mr. Auger could provide about the... I guess, I don't want to say it's abandoned right-of-way, but the old Gilson Road right-of-way across the street, is that just where the road used to run? And or... If you don't know, you don't know. It's more of a...
There's... I know that there's like a sidewalk walking path that goes through there. I mean, how... I mean, it's obviously not your normal right-of-way width. And you know, just definitely the actual crossing from Gilson Road is up a little bit. I don't know how that wound up. But I do know the property across the street there is... I forget the name of it. It's Crossway Christian Church. And we actually prepared that site plan many years ago. And that sidewalk was... The accessway was constructed through that right-of-way there as part of that site plan. How that came about, I'm not exactly sure. But it's just an oddity of right-of-way. I couldn't begin to explain how it came about.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Auger. The reason for the question was only because the new driveway for one of the new parcel, the middle parcel, basically comes out, pardon me, directly across. And I just didn't know if there were any constrictions or conflicts.
There's no cars that go through there, no traffic concerns, no potential conflicts or anything like that. Okay, very well. Thank you, Mr. Auger. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further questions by the board? Okay. Hearing none. I will go ahead and close the hearing and move on to the meeting. So we just have a four-lot subdivision here. We've got a couple of waivers, the first of which is the typical 1,000-foot feature. Second one is the sidewalk waiver. It's been presented, kind of the calculation method. I guess the staff's already reviewed the numbers on that, it sounds like.
Yes.
I'm seeing nodding. And then the rest of the stipulations. I think the comments from Joe Mandola, those are really dated October 4th. Is that correct?
Yes, October 4th.
October 4th, okay. And then I don't see any fire department stipulations, but I did see that they were approved at this point.
Actually, yes, we should add a stipulation 12. Prior to recording the plan, all comments in an email from Mark Repaglia, National Fire, dated October 20th, 2021, shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the National Fire Department. That's the latest information that will be in here.
Could you just write that maybe a little... Or say that a little slower?
Oh, sure, sure. I'm sorry. I don't know how fast I talk, so. Okay, "Prior to recording the plan, all comments in an email from Mark Repaglia, Nashua Fire, dated October 20th, 2021, shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the Nashua Fire Department."
Okay. All right. Are there comments by other board members in the meeting here? We're in the meeting.
Just with... Very quickly, Mr. Chairman. That email that Mr. Repaglia sent out just was an approval. There were no comments in that email to address.
Okay, okay. But to go on record, at least for the fire department.
Okay, so there wouldn't be anything to address anyway?
No.
Okay. Any other discussion items in the meeting? I would entertain a motion. Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve new business, Project A21-0215 subdivision plan, property located at 496 and 500 Main Dunstable Road in Nashua, finding that it does meet the requirements of NRO 190-138G, subject to 11 conditions of approval. Condition number one, with respect to a waiver of NRO 190-282B9, with respect to physical features on the site, shall read "is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation." Stipulation number two, regarding a request for waiver of NRO 190-212A1 regarding sidewalk, shall read "is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation." Further, the amount of the voluntary contribution shall be indicated as $10,150. Stipulation number three through five, as written in the staff report. Stipulation number six in the staff report shall be amended to indicate engineering comments dated October 4th, 2021. And stipulations seven through 11, as indicated in the staff report.
The dollar amount on the sidewalk was $9,630?
My apologies, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, $9,000?
$630.
$630. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would like to, if possible, I would like to amend stipulation number two for the dollar amount of the contribution to read $9,630.
Okay. Thanks. All right, so we have that motion to approve of the 11 stipulations as indicated by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Mian. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I will go ahead and... All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? None. That motion passes, 7-0. Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Next up, just a reminder, the two items on the agenda, A21-0215 and 0219, those were asked to be postponed to what date?
November 4th.
November 4th, okay. Can we get a motion to... Do we need a motion?
Yes, probably do, right?
It's just easier for notification letters.
Yeah, I would make a motion that we postpone to a date certain being the planning board meeting on November 4th, 2021, case number A21-0219 and case number A21-0220.
All right, so you have that motion to postpone those two items as indicated by Mr. Varley. Do we have a second for it? Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. That motion passes, 7-0. Next up, we have other business review of tentative agenda to determine proposals of regional impact. Anybody had a chance? I think there was a... Is there something in our packet? I'm just looking. Yeah, it looks like October 18th, technical review meeting agenda. Does anybody have a chance to look at that? There's a couple pages here.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that there are no projects of regional impact as identified via the technical review meeting on October 18th, 2021.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Ballinger that there are no proposals of regional impact on the tentative agenda. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Varley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. That motion passes, 7-0. Okay, next up, we have an amendment to our planning board bylaws to reflect having two meetings in January and September in lieu of one. This was, I guess, we didn't get to it on October 7th, so.
Yeah, what happens, we just... Because it was... We also had the tentative schedule for board meetings.
Yep.
And so we said we would defer action on that to give everyone a chance to review the schedule.
Yep.
And then we would handle both the items at the same time.
Yep, okay. So I'll bring them both up at the same time here, and we can vote on them separately. So I had a chance to look at the 2022 meeting dates. And the only comment I have is the meeting date of March 3rd, that's actually the Nashua City School Vacation Week. It goes into March this year. So I would propose maybe that we maybe shift the March meetings one week forward. So that would... And if we did that, that would make them on the 10th and 24th versus the 3rd and 17th. Usually we don't have great luck when we have a meeting during school vacation. For the public, as well as us. Is that... Did you see any issues with that?
No, we can shift it.
The only thing I was wondering, does that mean the one on April 7th should be really like a week later because it gets too close to the 24th?
Nope, exactly. April 7th is two weeks later.
So it's fine?
So it's fine.
Okay.
It's my birthday, but...
It was... We had one on Chris's birthday last year.
Yeah.
So now it's Lena's birthday. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Happy birthday to you.
Is it really?
Yeah.
And it's Scott's birthday, okay.
Does anybody have any other dates on there that look like they might be a concern? Okay. So if not, maybe what we could do, we can do a motion on the by... I mean, the bylaws are just being amended to give us two dates. But I would... I think that they don't have the... They don't... They don't say what days.
No.
So we could accept the amendment.
Because ordinarily, we would only have one meeting in January, one meeting in September. And so with the idea being, this provides greater flexibility. And if we don't have cases on those dates, then we don't have to have meetings.
Right. Okay. So does anybody want to make a motion regarding the proposed bylaw amendment for the two meetings in January and September in lieu of one? Mr. Varley?
I would make a motion to approve the amendment to the bylaws as presented to add a second meeting in January and September for the planning board meeting here.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Varley to amend the bylaws as stated. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. That motion passes, 7-0. And then regarding the adoption of the meeting dates, we could adopt it... I mean, my recommendation is the motion be to accept but to modify the March dates to reflect March...
10th?
10th and 24th as meeting dates. And then staff could adjust the other dates as appropriate. Anybody want to make that motion? I guess we could just say so moved, if you want.
So moved.
That motion by Mr. Mian to accept the 2022 meeting deadline dates with the changes to the March dates of 10th and 24th, and the rest adjusted accordingly. And do we have a second on that?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. That motion passes. Okay. I believe that's all we have on our agenda. Is there any discussion items? One thing I'd remind, I think Matt did send around a copy of the final master plan. So everybody should have a copy of that, or at least access to a copy of that. They can take a look at that. I don't know... Does that get voted in the Aldermanic meeting yet?
I don't know. Not sure.
I'm not sure either, to be honest. So if I just ask, Matt can send that by email to make sure.
Coming pretty close, I would think.
Yeah, it's around now, if it has nothing, so. Anybody else have any other discussion items? Mr. Ballinger?
Mr. Chair, just a question. If Mr. Cummings is going to be doing the presentation at the November 4th meeting, is that going to be included on the agenda? I just wanted to make sure we remember to show up an hour early.
Yes, it will be at 6 o'clock. I don't know if it will be Tim or the consultant, Andy Hill, who will be doing the presentation.
Okay. That'll be at 6:00.
It's at 6:00.
Okay, and then we'll have the Ballinger.
Yes.
Very well, thank you.
I guess you could send out.
We'll be sending out a reminder because it's a little different time.
Yep, okay. Other discussion items? All right, if not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, so we have a motion to adjourn. Don't need a second on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. That motion passes. We adjourned at 8:09.